Alright, good afternoon everybody. It is Thursday, July twenty eighth, twenty twenty two at six P M. And I will call to order the Free Town Board of Suck Meeting. Um, this meeting will be recorded and will be available on the Free Town YouTube page. Um, so first agenda item is uh to endorse the warrant for state primary scheduled for uh September sixth, twenty twenty two. And this is just a formality, right? We just have to do this?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, I looked at it. So with that, so all in change motion to endorse uh the warrant for state primaries scheduled for six, uh sorry, nine, six, twenty twenty two.
Motion read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, alright. That's how we got on the regular board of Suck meeting?
Alright.
So over to personnel.
Personnel, uh discussion plus action on the following topics. Item number two, appoint Linda Ramirez as part-time senior clerk for the fire effective seven, one, twenty twenty two for six, thirty, twenty twenty three. Uh, this is just a reappointment. Any discussion on it? Um, entertain the motion to appoint Linda Ramirez as part-time senior clerk for the fire department effective seven, one, twenty twenty two through six, thirty, twenty twenty three.
Make that motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number three, Sweden Magnet to zoning board of appeals associate member effective seven, one, twenty twenty two through six, thirty, twenty twenty three. This was on our last meeting agenda, but we had to change it to add associate member, so this is just a uh update. So any further discussion?
Nope.
How's that? I entertain the motion to approve uh Sweden Magnet to zoning board of of appeals associate member effective seven, one, twenty twenty two through six, thirty, twenty twenty three.
I'll make that motion. I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, looks like it's over to me.
Over to town.
Alright, so item number four, discussion vote on standards, policies, penalties to apply to businesses that violate tobacco regulations. So um Kevin and Laurie here to talk about this. Thank you.
Hi, so for the record, Kevin Demaris, uh health agent here in town. Um, while back, we had noticed we'd had a tobacco violation that's been taken care of. Uh, but there is some discussion because we haven't adopted a minimum or a set standard for violators, right? And I think we talked about it our last meeting, uh that we would meet tonight to to do that. Now, I think I briefly touched upon it, but I have recommendations on the on the papers that you have in front of you. Uh, I will readily admit that some towns are being very, very aggressive with this, seven days or five to seven days for the first suspension, you know? Um, I I I think what we did in this instance had worked, and I think we've had a very good uh track record in our town of compliance. Um, so my recommendations uh were that we uh one day for the first offense. And again, this is for the selling of uh uh tobacco to minors, okay? The other violations are spelled out, but this is specifically to minors. So uh the second offense, uh three-day loss and the third offense would be a five-day loss. And and again, these are within twelve months.
Twelve-month period, twelve-month period?
It's not a forever deal, so it's within a twelve-month period. So you you you'd have to be really bad at that to start violating those things or just not carry them. Uh, I can tell you that from speaking to the gentleman that was involved with this, it is a substantial hit. I know there's folks here that work in retail and all, and that is a substantial hit, not only just for that day. Uh, but you know, they've got to take the tobacco product, they've got to take measures to to hide all the stuff, put it away, and so there's work related with it all. So uh that was my recommendation. It seemed the board was amenable to the one day on the first uh for the first offense. That's what we gave the last uh violation. So um at this point in time, I would just ask the board if they have any comments, and if not, that we would adopt that as being the standard for tobacco violations for sale to a minor.
One question. So actually, there's a monetary part of this as well, right?
Mm-hmm.
So is that?
That's still part of it, right? So then the monetary is still there, so it's thousand-dollar fines and and and.
So it's thousand-dollar fines on the on the day one?
First offense.
For the first offense, and then the second?
Two thousand.
Yep.
And then the third offense is five thousand.
And would that be, is that a part of your recommended plan?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. That's the state law. The only of the only thing that's not spelled out specifically is the duration. They give you time.
Okay, so we're really not to vote on the monetary part?
No.
It's just we just go on 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 the days?
No, it's just the days, correct.
Okay, perfect. Just going to.
No, no, I I appreciate the question.
Report. Cole, would you have anything?
No, that's, I had that question at some point. Do they lose it altogether if they?
Yeah, they could, and and from my understanding, and Laurie, uh you've been doing this a little bit longer and had more of uh. And again, uh for the record, Laurie Demaris, public health nurse. Um, my understanding is if you violate so many times within a twelve-month period, you lose your license. And my understanding is that it's the actual address that loses the license.
That's not a big sense, because I've seen like, you see there's some gas stations that are just no longer gas stations. And I feel like you can't really operate a gas station if you're not selling cigarettes, right? Or tobacco products, so I.
So you're you're not you're not wrong with that, and and what happens is is it and 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 to be fair, the state is trying to eliminate this, as we are, right?
Yeah, right.
Um, but again, understanding sometimes that your management can do their best efforts, but you you could have a a rogue employee or employee just doesn't care. Well, whatever the case may be, uh and and um, you know, it's not the employee that typically suffers the wrath of it, it's it's the business. And so you couldn't sell, you know, let's just say it was uh Joe's Sitgo. And and they lose their license. He can't then sell to another person to come into that location and and sell tobacco. So it's a really, really big uh, I mean, I don't, that'll kick in.
Yeah, I get you.
Yeah.
It's like buying a house without the warranty.
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, yeah, it's so it so.
Okay.
Um.
Substantial.
Yes, it is substantial. You're absolutely right.
Yeah.
I mean, I, we obviously kind of set the precedent, the point with the first one, and I actually agree with it, hence why we agreed upon it. So um, I don't have a problem that you guys don't at all.
No, no. So. Is there shots across the bow, doing it right, or or else it really is, you know, doing it the right way?
You know, I mean, it's pretty much what the state's laid out for.
I I I asked just some retailers and find out, you know, and there's substantial amount of money that they make a day on tobacco, tobacco-related products, and the sales associated with that.
Absolutely.
So it does.
Yeah.
It does, it does really affect them in the pocketbook.
Absolutely.
It's a pack of them these days. I don't store it.
Oh, I have no idea what a pack of cigarettes is for.
Uh, anywhere from ten to fourteen dollars, I don't know, but yeah, depending. Some of them, I think, are even more than that now.
Really?
So.
Yeah. Jeez.
How can you afford to do?
Yeah.
So.
Okay, yeah.
Some people can, I guess. Alright, so um, I think we touched on that enough. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adopt the standards and policies um to apply to the businesses that violate tobacco regulations as stated.
I'll make that motion. I second.
I'll favor it.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so agenda item number five. So this one's a little bit more vague, but Kevin's done a good job of giving us some information with it. Um, discussion, discuss the role and responsibilities of the local board of health members and their agents relative to public health policy and law. Kevin, huh?
Sure, and and to be fair and and to be honest, uh the meeting request and all, and then what we were doing was requested prior to town meeting before, we knew we were gonna have a separate elected or appointed board, right? So um, this is also in response to, uh I've had inquiries, you know, what exactly does the board of health do? Um, I know oftentimes when I say, hey, we have this issue that we need to address, oh, okay, you know, it might be something new to prior board of health members and and new board of health members. So my intent was really just to introduce what we do, you know, we, I was at a joint meeting, uh and and there were questions, oh, you do that? Oh, how many do we have? So this was more in in line with just a general idea to let everybody know what exactly we do in the board of health.
I think that's great.
What some of the responsibilities, and 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 this is gonna be recorded, so hopefully any new board of health member that will be looking to run for board of will understand. And so I'm not gonna dive deep into every one of the issues. Uh, but I thought it best to 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 lay them out to understand that, uh, you know, the board of health and boards of health in general, not just the agent, not just the nurse, are getting pulled in a lot of directions. And people, I simply put it this way, if it's not a zoning violation and if it's not a a building code violation, it goes to the board of health.
Yeah.
And if you look at this list, and I'll just briefly go through it, right? So subsurface sewers, disposal systems, septic systems, right? Drainage and solid waste, we're involved with subdivision review relative to uh well locations and septic locations. Offensive and noisy trades, right? We coordinate with outside engineering contracts, which I'll probably end up having to do once we enlist the services uh for uh, you know, engineering oversight with with Excel. Uh, we've got money put aside for that, and so that's the intent, I think. Coming up, you'll be hearing uh something from me, uh asking permission to have the town administrator and I work together, come up with an RFP so that we can get the services in here and get somebody rolling on that. Okay? Uh, general nuisances, again, people calls for everything. Dead wood chip the other day on the side of the road, right?
I didn't die.
Uh, well, I wasn't there for half it, but I'm gonna make an assumption that it wasn't faster than the car that was coming. You know, lead paint, lead uh tobacco and the vaping products, we've talked about, you know, cannabis and C B D, we have, you know, there's a little bit of oversight that we have to do. In some other towns, the boards of health have adopted regulations relative to that, so then it would have a a further role within that. Uh, we have a very ancillary role, but it's still something that we need to be concerned with. You know, betterment for septic improvements, air and noise pollution, agricultural issues, right? We're working sometimes with farm complaints, uh sometimes with animal treatment complaints in conjunction with the the dog officer, excuse me, animal control officer, uh who work under the board of health and animal control regulations, right? Where they kind of, we have within our own regulations, regulations for piggeries and how to keep cattle and horses and all that. Uh, campgrounds, day camps, residential camps, we have a campground, we have a few day, a couple of day camps here in town. We have some uh potential for residential camps, with stayover camps, we have a role in all of that. Uh, just an example, the day camp inspection form is eight pages long, and it's everything from making sure they have core checks. Laurie makes sure they go through the complete medical record for 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 every camper to make sure that they're all set, you know, just it it soup to nuts.
There's a lot of lawsuits, I'm sure, that built that.
Well, well, exactly, you know, and 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 I will I will say out loud that we work with Camp Welch on this, and they're outstanding. They've got their ducks in a row, it makes it real easy for us, but at the end of the day, it's still ultimately our responsibility, you know? Uh, and and it takes time to do it and their oversight, you know, pool inspections, uh food safety, obviously, right? Retail food safety, kitchens, uh a lot of these uh residences that have kids staying in there, they need a kitchen inspection too, right? Uh, food trucks, one-day events, all those things, right? Uh, minimum housing standard and and complaints, right? You've got a tenant or, you know, that doesn't like their landlord or or how they're being treated, they gotta come to us. We have to handle all that. Sometimes it ends up at court, so there's a lot that goes along with that. Uh, opioid and other drug use and and prevention, uh we've been successful in getting a grant, uh excuse me, a lawsuit. The attorney general of the state uh sued the tobacco companies, I'm I'm sorry, the drug-making companies, tobacco was a different lawsuit. And uh, we're successful. Uh, we are going to be receiving in the next ten years approximately thirteen thousand dollars. And I will be asking uh the board's approval or at least guidance in some way relative to how we are going to spend it. I have my own thoughts on how we're going to do it, and I'll just say it out loud now. Uh, I'm all about prevention. Um, we can also use this to buy things like Narcan and all. This money, if it's going to a bigger city or town that 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 would have the opportunity to get more of the funds, you could you could hire people to run these prevention programs and all. We're getting a couple thousand dollars a year, fifteen hundred dollars a year, I average eighteen hundred dollars, right? So I will, and I don't, I don't know if this can be a possibility or not, but I know that my son, after going to a pontiquet, uh if there was one thing he said that that really um touched him, if you will, or had an impression on him, I don't know if anybody's heard of Chris Heron. Chris Heron was out of Fall River, right? Professional basketball player, his brother Michael was a professional basketball player. Chris Heron had a serious drug problem. Uh, it's been documented as a thirty-for-thirty on on ESPN. He has founded a a foundation and a wellness center that's located, I believe, in Tiverton or or in the south coast area. And he comes in and he does these speeches, and I've watched them myself. My son came home and said it was very effective. There were kids in the audience crying, uh because it it touched them and hit them, right? And somebody they can relate to.
Great book, by the way.
What's that?
His book is awesome.
It is, right, exactly, right? Um, and so my thought was maybe some of those funds can be used to to ensure that we can bring him or somebody like him in uh on an annual basis to the schools to do their deal, because I can tell you, uh my son didn't tell me a lot about high school, you know? But that was one thing that he said, let me tell you, Dad, that struck home. And uh, so I thought that might be effective, but we can talk about that at a later time.
Yeah.
Uh, body art, massage therapy, hair and nail salons, we have roles in that, we're gonna make sure that they're meeting public health standards, okay? Uh, household trash collection and recycling, that's an added gift that keeps on giving here in town.
I know.
You know, as I was telling Debbie today, in a lot of towns, the D P Ws handle that. We don't have a D P W, right? We have a great highway department, but we don't have the greater D P W, right? Department of Public Works. So it 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 falls on the board of health. Um, and and so, you know, we deal with trash complaints, we do a coordination with the contractor, we we deal with stuff like that. Uh, and some weeks you might not get any, and other weeks it's, you know, trash bags, we might have, you know, complaints about that or issues, or how do we get them? We sell them out of our office, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that we deal with. Uh, public health pandemic, communicable diseases, ticks and mosquitoes, immunizations, that's Laurie's end of the deal, I'd be in the public health nurse, but the board of health has a role in making sure that we are doing that, and it has ultimately has a responsible to do it. Uh, you know, this follow-up, I don't want to speak too much for for Laurie. Do you want to just, you know, briefly, what happens if you find out somebody's got a tick bite or has a communicable disease?
So I get notified from the state um for tick-borne illnesses, food-borne illnesses, um obviously COVID was a, is, you know, was a big one, and is still um followed with that. So I get notified of a case, and then there's follow-up. Depending on what the disease is, um the follow-up ranges, you know, from um just a couple of questions to a lot of questions. I have a case that I'm um trying to get in touch with now, cyclo squirrel, which was um food, um one-of-one kind of thing. And uh, the questionnaire is about twenty pages long.
Wow.
Um.
Good luck with your work with that.
Yeah.
Well, 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 right.
And and that's part of the thing, they basically tell you, you know, tell the person this could take, you know, at least twenty minutes for the questions. And it, a lot of the food buns are like that, where they have, um, they basically, and how do you remember? That's part of the problem too.
Yeah.
They wanna know, you know, what did you have to eat in the last, you know, seven days prior to you having these symptoms? And they literally list everything from A to Z, like berries, and then every single berry, um seeds. So um, there's, so depending on what it is, there's a lot of questions, um but it's hard because people can't remember.
Yeah.
Um, some people can, um, but for the most part, and then they wanna know certain foods, like where did you buy them? Where did you eat, for restaurants?
Yeah.
So depending if someone knows a lot of information, there's a lot that goes into the system.
That's interesting.
Yeah, so that's a fun one to get.
Yeah.
You might see that email come up and like, oh.
Oh, right.
Food buns are quite.
Yeah. And 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 that's and that's part of it too, right? We do a food inspection, I didn't bring one inspection folder, but there's over a hundred items that we're looking at when we go in, right? Um, so it's not just that we do it, it's, we have to do it, right? And there's a reporting and 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 all. Uh, so it can be intensive, and it it there's a lot of knowledge that 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 the board members have and and will have, and that the agent and the nurse need to have. Uh, we have great staff, uh we have a great board, uh they've been very, very supportive. Uh, but again, this was just to kind of give an insight to what we do on a daily basis and what what our responsibilities are. Uh, we have to do what's called a residential school state housing inspection. So all of Whitney Academy, all of Crystal Springs, we have to go into every year, we have to go into every one of their residential. Do inspections of every room within their closets, refrigerator, the whole nine yards, vents. And and we have to fill out these reports, and we have to send them into the state, we're required to do it for them. They don't get their funding, they will, they could lose grants, they could lose a lot of things if they don't have this stuff done. So we work with them, they're very good partners in this, we always have great success, but it's still, it's just an added thing that we do. Uh, dog and animal bites, they're mandatory reported to the board of health. Uh, I work in concert again with with Lisa, uh the animal patrol officer, who's extremely responsive and uh text back and forth. We send her the information, she'll call back, let me know resolution, uh but we're still responsible for keeping the files and following up on those things. Uh, bathing beaches and 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 pools, there's pool inspections, there's bleach regulations, there's beach testing, there's a lot of stuff to go in that. A lot of these things have their separate certifications too. Um, so I I guess that also I I would just say that it's impossible to get all these certifications right now and 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 all in a row, right? And we continue to use, like a lot of boards and agents are are starting this model where they're, they're going to be using these outside people because it is just impossible sometimes to get certifications in all these things in a timely manner and to be proficient in all those things. So I think we're gonna continue to, in in some instances, use outside for, you know, maybe our pool inspections for now and so on. Over time, I imagine that I'll I'll I will get these things. Um, but there are priorities, right? I think we step these priorities with septic, I think, and food, you know, I've got my food certification, septic will be coming up at least a part of it soon. So um, we're on our way with those things. Uh, I'm not gonna pat myself on the back, but I've been told, at least by our part-time agent who's been doing this for a while, that um I'm getting pretty good at this. So uh, I'm excited to learn more about it and excited to do it. Uh, and lastly, I just added one thing, it just came to my mind, I prefer to put on here as well, is drinking water, right? So we're we're responsible for that, making sure that people have that. Uh, and then um, we have to ensure that it comes with setbacks and all that other stuff for 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 buildability purposes. So my greater point was, there's a lot to this, right? And I thought it only fair that particularly newer folks, uh you know, to the boards, and I would consider you all relatively new, uh, you know, myself being new to the position, learning that there's even more than what I thought, and I think the general public to know and the and the future board members to know that this is the kind of stuff that we're involved with. And so, you know, we have rules and regulations that really haven't been updated meaningfully since nineteen seventy-seven. There's been a few updates here and there, and uh I know that the animal control officer has approached me. She would like to update some of her rules and regulations so that they're in line with current national law.
Yep.
Um, so she's, I've got her working on that one, she's got that, we will propose to bring it here and so that we can have a greater discussion about that too. Yeah, okay?
I I have a question. So do you think, I was just, you know, and look, I was looking at the website, you know, uh where we have the board of health, and we definitely, we have a description, it definitely touches on a lot of this stuff. Do you think that we should have like these kind of, almost like just this kind of punch list here?
I think absolutely, right?
Same thing.
Okay, because I think it'll do twofold, right? I think it'll educate, but it'll also instruct. If people look at, who do I talk to?
Exactly, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, no, no, I I think you're absolutely right. And for those folks that might be looking to come into town and open a business, who do I need to talk to?
Exactly.
Right? So no, I I can make sure that that happens.
Yeah.
I was thinking along those lines, but also.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was making notes while you were talking, you know? Like always, great information you're providing, is Kevin. You alluded to working with other departments, you know, you talked about, you know, working with the nerves, of course.
Yeah.
Working close together, the animal control officer.
Building department.
Building department, right.
Conservation.
So I think internally, we have a list, right, of, alright, I'm I'm gonna build a house, I'm gonna put a pool in, I need a septic.
Yeah.
An internal list of like, chapters, right? A, B, C.
Yeah, we have, we we call it the purple sheet.
Right.
We have a checkoff.
Online, so I look forward online prior to meetings, see what the board of health look like, you know, as far as the website. And to a point, what Trevor was just saying, putting this out there, but also a check sheet for the people out there to know what they have to go through to get a specific permit, right? Like an A, B, C, I gotta go to.
I don't disagree.
Building, building first, health second, back to building, back to health.
I don't, I don't know if it's on the, I don't know if it's on the building's page or 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 portion of it. But I can, I will make sure if we're gonna put this on there, and thank you, again, that's a great idea, this is the guidance I love. I will get that on there, right?
Yeah.
Uh, what we need to do, because there is, within our own regulations, within state sanitary code, you're right, I'll just give a an example, right? Uh, you wanna build a house, okay? First thing you need to do is sink your well. Okay, so well permit, we grant the permit, well gets put in, we need to get the well results, and it needs to be registered with the state. Once that's done, then I can issue the septic permit, okay? Once the septic permit is is signed off by our own code of regulations and the state's sanitary code, that's when you can go get your building permit, right? And then after that, you know, there are other steps to follow. So to your point, I think you're right, it would be very, very helpful to have it both on the building and the board of health page within our website. Uh, the the checkoff list, uh so the people, to your point, uh one of building a house, developer, uh you know, somebody wants to have commercial-wise uh add to do that, so I'll make sure that that gets.
And I'm sure we could probably find a a similar town that, if they do have that, you know, we could, we could borrow.
Yeah, we have, so we have a checkoff list, we've added, we've 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 added uh another layer too.
Yeah.
In that any and all uh building permits that are not simplistic, what do I mean? If you're getting a siding or roofing or windows, you know, electrical, no plumbing, no. But if you're doing a pool, a deck, an add-on, a garage, a patio, that would need a permit, a fence, anything like that, we have them come to the board of health now so that we can ensure that, one, you're not gonna put your pool on top of your septic system, right? Uh.
Right, makes sense.
Right, right, uh there are certain setbacks to to foundations and structures and water lines and everything in the code. We, that way we can ensure, we don't charge a fee for it, it's fairly simple, we produce the plan and as-built or something of that they already have of their property. And uh, then we ask them to put on there where the, what what the work is and the location of it, and then we make a determination. So so far, we've stopped a couple people from putting uh a deck post right into their septic field. Um, unfortunately, years ago, it didn't happen, and I will tell you that that actually happened once. Somebody was putting a deck around a pool, and they ended up digging right into their septic field. That's a bad day.
That's a really bad day.
That's a really bad, or or better still, you know, we, they 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 concrete or they put a beautiful stamped concrete patio right over their septic tank.
Yeah.
Right, so now how do you have access?
Yeah.
Right?
Bad day too.
So uh.
Yeah.
They have, I can tell you, the people that have come in, and I've had to say, hey, look, you know, they've been very, very appreciative of it. So I think it's working, and again, it's no fee, and returning on timeline, that typically is less than five minutes for us.
Yeah.
So uh, you know, if, of course, if we're in the office, if not, we'll get back in after inspection to do that. So I'm not gonna belabor the point, obviously, again, we know where we are with this, eight months, it it may be, you know, there'll be different people, I'll be telling this too. But eight months can be a little bit of a period too, and I I thought it only fair that uh that you guys uh knew exactly what we were doing, uh that I could get more feedback, and this has been great, so I appreciate that. Uh, and we can make a positive step forward, and I think we're gonna do that with some of the stuff on on the web. So uh, with that, I I'll I'll open it up if you have any questions for myself or for Laurie. Uh, if not, I've.
Got a couple more, if if you don't mind.
Please, yeah, yeah.
So I have this this dream of Free Town, right? Uh, and mostly, when it comes to permits, think back to the permit thing. I know we've been working with different companies to scan everything in, to make sure that everything's online, so it's readily accessible to all the residents. And Jared, maybe this is your, a question to you as well, mostly to you, do we foresee putting all these permits online in a digital database versus having someone come in every single time?
I mean, I I.
You know?
I can speak to that.
Okay.
Uh, to a certain, I think the town administrator can also speak to that. Uh, I think there have been funds set aside to enter into a contract with a online permitting. My understanding is it it may be a gradual or a graduated rollout, I think, starting with the building department. Maybe closely followed by the board of health, I don't wanna speak for you, but this is my understanding as it was told.
You're correct.
Okay, so so to answer your question, absolutely, you know, I think it um, it would help everybody. And and within that software, there's a tracking, right? So you know if it's going through Concom, you know, I've I've already started uh and asked the water department, and my ultimate goal too is not only for just a permitting, but if we have plans that come in, we're starting to require, and if I have your blessing, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add that as a requirement uh for uh electronic files. Right now, we need hard copies, right? We'd have to physically get them out. We already, I've already implemented it when I was on planning board, I already implemented it on conservation. Uh, and I'd like to do it here in the board of health, so that we have an electronic database. And I would like to have them put somewhere on the server so that anybody can look at them, any department can go in there and look at them. Heck, in some towns and some communities, the 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 general public, these are public documents, so the general public can go in. So what it would do at the end of the day, it would save that resident from coming down and wanting to know where my septic tank is or where my underground utility is.
That's the purpose.
Right, right. So I'm I'm excited about that, like I said, I don't have much control over that, that's a, you know, it's a, it's a purchasing uh deal and procurement and 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 and. So when it does happen, I'm eagerly anticipating that I will take part right away and that we will uh, we will be very successful with it. But if I have the board's blessing, I'm gonna start requiring uh PDFs of these things so that we can put them in in on a shared uh folder on the server so that folks can get at it.
Makes sense, right?
Absolutely.
As long as it's not violent once against that, I don't see why.
No, there there isn't.
Right.
No, no, I've already asked, the water department's already done it, everything that they got scanned is now in, uh I I believe in a shared location so that if uh if somebody needs to look at plans relative to that, it's a small step, but with my my involvement with the water department, I asked the chancellor, has done that. He sent an email out the other day to say, hey, listen, if you wanna access these things, go to this location.
Excellent.
Yeah, seeing that, to that point, I think, you know, you're busy and someone, something, in a building department.
Right.
And you're not, you're in, you're testing something, right? They can just go on and get it rather than having to wait for Kevin to come back or whatever.
You got it. You're right.
It's just.
It's it, and I, and and again, that's the direction we're going, right, with the with the electronic permitting. Um, but in the meantime, we can at least do this, and and you know what? They'll all be in one place. I'm a big proponent of never throwing out any records, right? I've been doing what I've been doing here in town long enough to know that, boy, the historical data is just, and I know we've had some in storage, and I know that the the state allows you to throw it out. I've been a big proponent of, if it's in that file, leave it in that file, because you never know someday. I'm getting phone calls now for stuff that happened in the seventies and eighties, and we're fortunate enough that we, in some cases, have good records. We go out there and we can see. And so it's been hugely benefited. And so it's been hugely beneficial, and and so if we can get them in a smaller space electronically, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Right?
Yeah, I guess I'll just add to that, we are trying to get, we got funding at the town meeting for online permitting, and that was one module, right, that building. But this, when it rolls out completely, which will be every department in the town, that even like if the building has a a building permit application that is, say, in front of the conservation agent or in front of the Board of Health, the homeowner or the resident that has applied online can actually go in and find out where in the process their permit is, what what the hang of this.
Yeah.
And if there's a deficiency in the application, an email will go to that person and say, we need your certificate of insurance. And then, so they, or they can say, why is my number, my permit hasn't come, and they can go on, they can look and say, oh, I I didn't give them my certificate of insurance.
Yeah, rather than playing phone call, phone tag when somebody's out.
Right, and you know, most people work, like they work, and they're they're not, they can't get to the town hall, you you know, during age of four. So it's, it will be beneficial, it's really um a long time coming, I think, to the town, but it is a slow rollout because it is a huge learning curve, and there's a lot of data that has to go into that. Because it will also, like, you know, speak to the assessor's office and get the street address and add the map a lot, like, there's a, it it will it will work, and so there's a lot to it.
G I S map and everything else.
Yeah, yeah.
Integrated.
Yeah, um so it also will talk to the state to see if the contractor actually has an active license. I mean, there's a lot to it, it's extremely beneficial, but it's a slow process and it's not inexpensive by any means. But we are planning, we just need to pick the company that we're gonna go with um and move forward. So we're actively working on that, so just, yeah, it it would be, but it's, it's a, it'll be two or three years before we're fully rolled out with that.
And this reminded me of something, so I forwarded you guys an email, I've I got, I got a lot of emails, you know, um from all these different vendors trying to. And there was one caught my eye and say, it's for nuisance or any kind of complaints that a lot of them would be, you know, related to the Board of Health and its agents, or, you know, other types of uh issues, like police fire, kind of issues, and it's, it's like a a si- single place that you put the complaints in, and then it points it to the right people.
Okay.
That, and and also tracks it.
Okay.
So that, 'cause I think sometimes, like, I could, I can imagine myself doing this, like, seeing something that's like, oh, that that needs to be addressed, but don't even know, like, exactly what to do. Who am I calling, right? If you make that that barrier to entry, to make that complaint, and and also then takes off the administrative side of someone, you know, getting all the information right about that complaint, right? So I don't know the cost of this or what or what it is, we.
We did that in the answer, actually, I just don't remember the cost.
It's just because it could just be an app or a website, they could go in and 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 make the complaint and then push it to the right, the right people to to solve it. You know, something, I think it'll definitely lead to more problems, you know?
You know, and that's fine, but you know, but because at the end of the day, right, and 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 that's another thing, right, just general overall complaints, right? That's why I said general nuisances, that's a lot of what we 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 do.
Yeah.
Just overall in town hall, right? A- a- and general, right? You're not usually not going to the assessor's office to thank them, right?
Exactly.
Uh you know, nine out of ten times, uh the phone calls that we get, uh is is there's a, there's a, about complaints, it's, you know, it could be a neighbor dispute, it could be a legitimate thing.
Yeah.
But a lot of times, what they are, quality of life issues.
Yep.
And if we can take care of that, then we're doing our job. You know, I just look at it this way, we've, you know, I, we work for the town, uh and we work for the town folks, right? So I try to be very, very responsive, if somebody calls me, if somebody has a complaint, I try to get out there that day, I try to respond to them, at least let them know where I'm at.
Yep.
Uh and 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 what I'm thinking. Sometimes they may not like the answer, hey, listen, this is the deal, but other times, and we've been successful in in getting some of these small quality of life issues taken care of. And we've gotten thank yous and and and, you know, so I think we're doing a good job as a whole here.
Yeah, I I think I like to, like, when it comes to staffing, you know, that kind of stuff, if we have metrics behind, you know, and you can actually prove the data, right? We've had this many complaints related to this, like, we we obviously need, you know, like, then it's it's easier to go and ask the town to, you know, vote for it for increasing the budget line.
That's something that I think, you know, once we, again, we have the new Board of Health, or if you'd like me to do, I know uh Lori and a lot of other towns will, they'll do a a uh health agent's report, so to speak, almost similar to a town administrative report. You know, this is what's going on, this is what we're working on, this is a problem we had, this is, um you know, so um I could certainly do that, you know, we keep complaint logs, obviously.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh we keep track of everything we do. I will tell you, uh my clerk, Alberta St. Louis, is is, I I, nobody better say a bad thing about her. I'm just gonna tell you that right now, I'm just gonna tell you that right now. Uh she's just outstanding, uh she's the glue that keeps uh that that office together. Uh she keeps my sanity, uh and she keeps me pointed in the right direction. And I would say that in some of those busier departments, uh you need that, right? You need that that anchor that can that can keep you there. So uh so kudos to her and and, but we have all the lists of everything that we do and all our, so we can certainly provide that.
Yeah.
I just wanna make one more point, and I brought this up, I talked to Kevin, but it's very, but and just and the how busy that office is and that they're, you know, the, you know, the size of the office, and then there's four people in there.
Yeah.
So sometimes it's just so chaotic because there's four people in a, I don't know, what, maybe twelve by sixteen, I don't know.
Well, it might be twelve by sixteen, but the usable space, I would argue, is probably thirty square feet.
But I know.
There is some bulky desk in there, for sure.
It's hard to be on the phone, there's customers and 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 Alberta's on the phone, and Kevin's, it's, so I just wanna, I know that we all know that there's space constraints at the town hall, we're all well aware of them, but I just wanna point out, there's four people in there, not every day, but three every day, anyway.
Yeah, for a portion of every day, there would be three, uh you know, obviously, you know, Alberta works part-time, Dale works part-time, Lori works part-time. But on Tuesdays, and so uh I'm trying to uh work with Dale, and I told you that, to to lessen the load on Tuesdays. To, maybe I can use it more on one other day rather than coming in for a long time on Tuesday. He does our beach sampling for us, it saves us some money to have uh us do it, and we bring it down to the lab in New Bedford, where it's only twenty dollars for the test rather than seventy-five, you know, I think it's close to a hundred now, at at other labs. So it's a, it's a money saver at the end of the day.
Yeah.
Um but if he doesn't have to come in, or, hey Dale, you know what, on your way back from New Bedford dropping off, why don't you go check out this septic system or this food complaint or this food, you know, and not come into the office and maybe spend an extra hour or two in the office some other day during the week? And I think, because again, Debbie brought it up, and and I may not be in the office, we try to schedule inspections on Tuesday so that we're out of the office, so that Lori's in there and and, you know, uh but sometimes it's just, we don't necessarily have an inspection, we have other stuff we have to work on. Like, we review septic plans and what have you and all, so uh yeah, Deb makes a great point. Um and uh so we're trying to, I'm at least trying to address that portion on Tuesday by by rearranging the schedule.
That's one more thing you have to get thought to.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, you're right.
I have to work my schedule around.
No, I, believe me, I I I, I've been to to, I've been to.
Yeah, that's a real.
Law, law, I've been to Lori's office and and their secretary's office, or their clerk, I don't know what they call them in there, you know? Uh administrative assistant, excuse me. Um his office is bigger than our entire office.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, and she's the only one in there, right? Or she shared that with one of her clerks?
She shares it with the hell they do.
Okay, okay. Um and 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 so, I know, we're tight on space, we all know that, right? We're not complaining about it, but it's it's almost overstating the obvious.
Well, I was gonna say, like, it adds one more layer.
It does.
You've got all this going on, and now you're trying to be on the phone, and I know I can't, if you're talking on the phone, I can't, I can't.
It is.
It's so distracting to me if you're sitting across from me, not you, particularly, you sit, someone's sitting there talking on the phone, it's difficult, so. And there's nowhere for you to be comfortable.
No, no.
So I just wanna add that, so like, you know, for people to realize there's that, I mean, there cannot, we can't add anymore.
No, no, I'm trying to rearrange some furniture in there now, I'm gonna get rid of the refrigerator and microwave because, well, uh you you know, in the grand scheme of things, it would be better to have another desk area so we can lay out plans and all. Uh so yes, we're trying, we're trying, we're trying.
Big floor.
It is what it is, right?
It is, it's, it's a small building.
It can, it does, right?
Right, not on a daily basis, there are, it can, and that's that is one of my points, it's just, you know.
And just even the setup, I can't see my clerk because, so every time I wanna talk to her, we're standing up, or she needs to hand me something, she's like, oh, I'm, 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 I'm like, I'm gonna sit down, I'll come up to you.
And when you see the paper airplanes, it's really, we're not playing.
No, no, we're just trying to play information back and forth.
Well, I mean, I might be stating the obvious, but we appreciate it, I feel you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Moving the town forward.
We are, we are.
It's just happy, right?
You know, uh we keep moving in a positive direction, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Good?
I'm good, I'm good.
I just know guys all have my phone number, you're gonna reach out to the office, right, you are my boss, certainly, reach out to me anytime you want, and and I'll be happy to talk to you today, and if you have any problem, anybody has an issue, they bring your attention, certainly bring it tomorrow.
All right.
All right?
Appreciate it.
Appreciate you indulging, thank you.
All right, have a good day.
Have a good night.
Are we good?
Oh, yeah, sorry, we gotta sign things and then we'll, you guys are good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, yes, thank you, thanks for having us, yeah. One, just, I'm sorry, one more thing, uh the air sensors, you started distributing them today?
Oh, awesome.
Just just so we have a better feeling about, I spoke with this uh this woman who's working with the D P's for coordinator, so I have a better feeling about the outreach that we're gonna get from them. Um but uh over fifty percent of the towns that have received this grant have not put theirs out either.
Okay.
I think there's, they've had questions and difficulties doing it, but I think we've got it licked now, so I think the.
Just for the mole out and everything else?
Yeah, yeah, so they're gonna go on the schools, uh and this was a grant, so in some instances, they're mandated in locations, so uh the three schools, and I'm sorry, the three fire stations, and the school, uh we're gonna put two on High Street, two on Alexandra. Uh and then we're going to have, uh I think, one or two on Brayley Road. As as was laid out in the.
Are we gonna put in any town report or anything, let the residents know where they are?
So so these are, we could, we could put that location, this is real-time data, couples. So what happens is you go onto the website and you could go right to that location, you can get the data from that. But if you want, we can certainly put on our page the uh the locations of these, we can do that.
Well, I just wanna, I just wanna be.
I I don't have a problem with that, except for just if you're putting them on private residence, verify with the private residence.
No, I I will, and part of that is, these private residents agree that their data and their location is going to be on the worldwide web because this is real-time data. But if you would like, we have, we have a signature uh uh sheet for these folks when they come in, we can certainly add that on there to to let them know that we will be putting their locations on our website also.
Yeah, that's fine, I just don't, you know.
No, no, I I, that was my first thought, too, but then understanding the the whole idea is that this is, these locations are on the, well, there's maps, they're supposed to show exactly where they are.
All right, perfect.
Yeah, great.
Question?
We all, we all set? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion means?
Second. All in favor?
All right.